Liz Bray. As we gather and prepare for this very important meeting, gracious God, we pause to reflect on the importance of this meeting to everyone present, to each of the officers or leaders of this board, and to each of the community folks who have come with their issues and concerns. We thank you, having gone through the opportunities that this meeting provide, for the community, for the support it offers and provides in times of need and crisis. May our lives be blessed and strengthened and enriched, because we have been together in this dealing with our issues and concerns. Bless the agenda before us, and may this be a productive meeting as we conduct ourselves in ways that are pleasing in your sight. Amen.
Everybody please remain standing.
So, um, Mayor, we all agree that, uh, kind of like these call for recognition of public service. Uh, we had recently a local man who's given along, uh, a lot of his life to, uh, the community who's passed away, Mr. Walter Guydel. So, um, Mayor's asked me to read this proclamation for a moment of silence in his honor. So the title is "Proclamation of a Moment of Silence Honoring the Life and Service of a Firefighter and Highway Supervisor Walter Guydel." Whereas our community has recently experienced a profound loss of a dedicated public servant, a courageous firefighter and respected highway supervisor, whose tireless commitment, leadership, and compassion have left an indelible mark upon our town and village. Whereas the firefighter selflessly served with unwavering bravery, protecting lives and property, and exemplifying the highest ideals of service, courage, and sacrifice. Whereas the highway supervisor led with vision, integrity, and steadfast devotion to the well-being and progress of all residents, fostering a spirit of unity and stewardship in our community. Whereas his passing is deeply felt by his family, friends, and colleagues, and the people whose lives he touched, and his legacy will endure in the hearts of all who knew him. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that we, as a united community, pause to honor his memory, his service, and the example he set for all. Let's now observe a moment of silence to reflect upon his life and to express our deepest gratitude for his dedication and service. May his courage and commitment continue to inspire us, and may his memory be a long-suffering.
Move on to, uh, public input. Anybody have anything for public input?
I guess I'm here as a representative of the Charity Street neighborhood. Um, I've been doing a little digging with the state as far as stormwater permitting and things of that nature. I'm still in the process of finding more out, but what I'm curious about is, um, does Walton have a stormwater management plan? Does our stormwater go through the waste treatment plan or directly into the river? Um, and my biggest concern is the work that's going on over at the Empire Manufaktions property, I understand, is site prep work that no permitting was necessary for from the village. Um, and the flooding that has occurred in our neighborhood subsequent to that, what if no construction took place? What if no further work because of the economy, because of decisions that are made by the property owner? Are we left with this situation? So that's my biggest question right now is, we don't know, we, the public, have not been made pretty to what the plans are, when this will be brought before the planning committee, when construction will start to take place, or any of that. So that's my biggest concern right now is, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, when this is going to be resolved. So if you have any insight to that, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, we start with the first question that you had, stormwater, um, last guard.
By the way, I would also like to say, thank you. You were out there before the rain started, you guys again, and I really appreciate that. I mean, Saturday morning, whatever it was, the rain started, and I heard the pumps right away. So I knew that you guys were there, and I really do appreciate that, because I don't know if it was we didn't get as much rain as was expected, or you were there ahead of time to catch it, but we had no flooding in the latest rain. So I really do appreciate that. So it does go straight to the river?
Yeah.
Not through the stormwater?
Okay.
With regard to when his, uh, his building goes up, we don't have that information yet. I don't believe there's, there's no firm plans. Um, the proper work, as you said, is not, um, doesn't require permitting at this point. So we have, we have no real saying of what he does with that. Um, the only thing to give a saying, sort of, was the, uh, resolution to get that ditch dug, pipe placed, et cetera.
Has, has that discussion taken place?
That's an interesting question. Yes, uh, that, uh, the mayor has been working on that very diligently. So, long story short, the, the plate was supposed to be, there was a agreement in place, uh, to route the water towards the back of Mr. Green's property along its traditional route.
Over to Toy Brook below the cemetery.
That's right. I think it's true. It was Toy or the other one. I can't remember. Toy Brook. It's Toy. We had an agreement in place with that. Things were, uh, very much ready to go. We had a, we got approval from state, was it, that we got approval from finally?
Yes.
The date, um, and then it fell apart, because, uh, there was an incident where one of our board members went on the property, which angered the property owner, and he rescinded his agreement to do so.
Do we know where the village, where the property lines are, in mind, yeah? What the offset from the street is? Because my understanding is the village owns a certain amount of property off the street. So it was a question of whether or not that board member was on village land or private property. And I don't know if that's been resolved.
Regardless of that, at this point, it's more of a matter of personal conflict.
Okay. That personal conflict is about to get personal conflict with some of us in the neighborhood. We're contacting lawyers and about to, it's a notice of an intent to sue at this point, because it's infringing on our property rights. Um, and it's, it's becoming more of an issue than just, oh, yeah, it's going to get taken care of. We don't know when. So I think that's a serious issue that needs to be resolved.
Yeah, which I totally agree. We need to resolve it, and we need to resolve it. The way we had it going would have been cheap or free, right? Existing parts, labor that was nearly paid, like, almost cost-free. Alternative, of course, is to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars for something, which is not optimal. I'd better not do that. So, rock and hard place at this moment.
And again, this is an issue that you guys have been, every single month, we discuss it, and you say you are on top of it, which is great, and you are. But then a board member decided to do it himself. And again, it was something that should have been taken care of 50 years ago. It's not just because it's my brother-in-law's place. It, it's his property. He can do what he wants with it.
I've spoken to the hospital, talked about their cisterns under the Delaware, um, mental health clinic, the old one. See if there's something we can use of those as far as evacuating the water out there. We've also talked to them about using potential access points to get to there. Butch and I have gone over there quite a few times to try to figure out some avenue that would be non-taxpayer burden, um, without digging above Maple Street or all of, most of those streets over there, try to accommodate this, this flooding issue. So, I mean, it's, it's not, I know, I know it seems very slow and nothing is happening, but, I mean, every single day it rains, or every day, we're trying to come up with a plan. And it, I mean, we're wait, right now, we're waiting on engineers that are discussing the mental health clinics, um, access points, and a couple others.
Right, but I've al, I've already spoken to the hospital administration about the two acres of impervious parking lot they're going to build. And they've already said, well, part of the plan is to put cisterns under the ground to collect all that rainwater. There should be no more runoff than there is from the grass, which right now is none from the area that they're talking about building the parking lot. And yet, we're dealing with this, where the planes can race three to five feet. Um, and there's a question that I have about the state permit that describes that the runoff is going to go to the eastern side of the property. Well, that's fine, but it doesn't discuss the western side of the property, which is where we are. So that's one of the concerns that I have about the state stormwater management permit.
So, I mean, if you look at the timeline, we, we worked on something in the beginning. We were able to get an agreement. We were able to get permitting, and then that failed. So now we're back to square one, trying to start all over again. So, I mean, honestly, I, I wish that had not failed, and we could go forward, and that would be draining, and we would not be having this conversation monthly. But it's not the case. So now we're here and having this conversation monthly, and we are trying. And I know that you're also doing your research too. I, I can tell every one of you is doing your research. I mean, I get calls from Mr. Posmato, I get calls from everybody on this street, probably on a weekly basis, based on what are we doing to move forward. It's just, it, it's, there is so many moving parts in this thing, and I, I really am trying. You know, I mean, I know we got nice dry weather right now, but, I mean, and then next week, I understand. But at the same time, I mean, it's not like we're just saying, leave you guys hanging out there to dry. I mean, we have DPW over there pumping every single time it rains.
And that's very appreciated.
Right. But, I mean, at the same time, we're taking ownership of the situation, and we're trying to resolve it. But now, we are responsible for sixty, seventy years of handshakes and agreements that should have never taken place. So is this, is this Mr. Frainer's fault? No. Is this a board member's fault? No. I mean, this is something that's been happening for sixty, seventy years, well before any of you own these properties or had houses there. And now, we're responsible for taking care of it. So we're trying to do the best we can to get through it. And I'm sorry that your house is over there, and I'm sorry that your house is flooding, but I really am trying.
Well, all I can say is it won't be too much longer before we're starting to get involved.
Well, I understand that, in that which case, we would have to obviously step away from this conversation. He's our lawyer, but...
No, I understand. I think there's been more than enough time to come to a resolution that everybody should be happy with. And I know you say it was definitely, we had one, but, uh, so, we'll see what happens.
Understood. Anybody else, Republican vote? All right, move on. Uh, has everybody had a chance to look at the abstracts approved? One favor, Kerry. Everybody have a chance to look at the last month's minutes?
Yes, the only thing is the, on the pool project, the bids should be bids.
Everybody have a chance to look at it? Moving on to department hats. Start with, start that out.
Good. Um, just a few things. Who's closing last day? We, uh, rest seven to Sunday after the fair. Do mostly to lack of light guards. Uh, so we're last since we had a hundred and fifty-two kids take it this year. We had a water tunnel after the last day. This is raining, but it still was a kid's success. And we're hoping next year to have someone who can teach light guarding, water safety at the, at our pool, so we can maybe not worry so much about light guards. It'd be nice to have something at our own facility. And arts and crafts is the only thing they're still going to this Wednesday, they're for Thursday, excuse me, and they'll have their tie-dye t-shirt, and that'll be the end of summer. And then I had the quest for the, uh, the handicap swing, wheelchair swing, and a platform, a swing platform chain, and a high-capacity adaptive swing seat, which is also part of the handicap. Since it's not the framework, this is just buying the, it swings itself. Pretty pricey, but the rest of the framework, I think we have leftover from, we took the swings out of the pool years ago. So it's, it's pretty heavy-duty stuff.
So you need a motion to, um, to purchase this, these items at three thousand ninety dollars for the ADA compliance swing set?
Yeah.
He had a budget for thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-three, right, Joey? Thirty-three? Thirty-three hundred. So I get a motion to...
Motion to, uh, allow the purchase of the handicap wheelchair swing and the cestas.
Is that for Austin Lincoln?
Yes. So a little background, uh, last year, mid-2024, Amanda Conklin, uh, brought our, our attention that we had a lack of, um, accessible play equipment on, at Austin Lincoln. Uh, recently, again, they reached out to, uh, to us, and, uh, Molly Happel and Amanda Conklin, and the mayor found money that we could use for it, and so we're going to bring that to reality at Austin.
And you said August seventeenth, the pool's closing?
Yeah.
Does it seem like, what day is the tie-dye thing we're talking about?
Uh, it's coming Thursday.
Right.
What time?
Uh, between nine and twelve, nine-thirty and twelve-thirty, excuse me.
Closing down? About fourteen for the tie-dye, and the seventeen, we're closing.
This Thursday, which is the seventh. This Thursday, the seventh is the last day for us, right, for the tie-dye?
I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
Seventh is tie-dye day.
Yes.
Is that everything? You good? Everybody in the board okay? Busy month?
Yeah, same, same type of stuff.
Any questions?
I don't even have anything to ask for.
That's good.
Eric, I got my report. Um, I had two requests. The first is from, to replace the backhoe tires from Paulman's Fire at a cost of two thousand fifty-five dollars, which is a budget cost eighty percent, that was twenty percent E.
Bring it up.
Motion for the backhoe tires?
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
And the second one is to install an oil valve over here. Loyers designed by Manhole Three Twenty-Eight, which is located behind it very well. We've had trouble accessing that manhole weight.
Can you explain that?
They're spending some way, kind of, setting on there, and we're using it periodically. And we have a sandblower stuck in that manhole that we access Monday to Friday.
Yeah, Eric, so you know, we're bad at police work, talk to the mayor. We just thought if we put no loitering signs, at least people call them fitches, not trespassing, allows access to the, or daily activities, but they're camping out there, basically, you know, sitting on it, and choosing to move when you guys turn.
That was really my, my question, is if loitering is the proper wording?
Yes, well, yeah, we're thinking the dusted on on that as well.
Loitering, I mean, they take a lot of sections out of loitering, the trespassing.
Yeah.
That'll be a good start.
We just, if you wrote no trespassing, then that would stop all the activities.
Yeah, you're right. That's what I'm trying to push out, make sure we do it appropriately, so we don't have to revisit it in the month.
Right.
If you have problems. Okay, I mean, loitering is probably a good start. I just don't know what the enforceability of that is with looking for codes of police if they show up and these, and back loitering.
Yeah, maybe, like you said, the section, they took out the section where you're lingering, the loitering section, so it's more, maybe more of a trespassing than a loitering.
I don't think so too. I don't think so too. Um, and I just don't know how to articulate that in a concise manner that everybody will understand. You cannot just sleep on the grate. You have to, but you can't access other areas. I think probably, as long as it says no loitering, you can tell that that means something. That'd be probably okay, but just want to make sure.
This is also assuming they know what that means. I know this point several times, and it continues.
Right, so, I mean, at some point, he's got to actually get arrested for obstructing the readministration of our sewer system, so...
Sorry, I think we just mentioned both, go from one and then to break to the next, if that's the meaning. So I would make a motion that they go ahead and put a no loitering, also a no trespassing at that location.
Give me a second. Favor, Kerry. Fares and trespassing signs.
So for code enforcement, the past month, we had six building permits, thirteen fire safety inspections, three complaints, two orders of remedy, twelve notices of violation for the lawns, one CO search, and one delinquent lawn that required monitoring. So the letters are doing, having some effect on people. They're reminding them, and they are getting out there, getting it taken care of. Um, so, uh, Union Street has a section that is really overgrown and not being kept up by the landowners. And so I've sent letters to three property owners, and they're unresponsive. I have also tried to reach out to New York State and find out some budgeting, some money that we can get for, or kind of budgeting for grants, money we can get to have dilapidated structures taken down. It's a fairly straightforward process. The application does have a thirty-five-page explanation on how you fill out the application. So I'm going to request that the board send that to our attorney to be able, for him to fill that out. When we do move forward with that process, all we require from the homeowner is a signature saying they are willing to let us do that, and then we can do that, and it won't be a cost to the municipality. And the homeowner, if it doesn't happen, means they're going to take them down or demolish. We'll, we'll be able to find, figure it out some way.
You have, that's great. Do you have a list or a grouping of structuralization attendments? Use that one, or is that just...
Yes, I don't have them on the top of my head.
No, I'm not asking for that. I just wanted to know.
I do have a list of garages and, uh, structures that you can be taking down.
That's great. Love that. Um, okay. How long is the application if the explanation is thirty-five pages?
Yeah, I don't think it's thirty-five pages for the application, but the instructions are very lengthy.
Yes, uh, okay. Yeah. Uh, so you need a motion to allow, uh, legal review of the application? Is that correct?
Legal review and filling it out, whatever cost it would be for the, our attorney to do these machines.
When's the property after the house is removed? Was there anything that...
So, yes, after the house has been removed, nothing can be built there unless it meets, um, low-income housing, which is HUD standards of construction.
And that's based on the balance of the village, HUD housing, uh?
Correct. That does have to do with the fact that our municipality here in the village is a predominantly low-income municipality, and that's why that situation is being lifted.
So it's a minimum standard of what HUD requires?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be used for HUD housing, it just, that's the minimum standard, is that what you're saying?
My understanding, yes. And this is also why I would like to have it reviewed by our attorney. Make sure that I'm not missing, misreading something, or misunderstanding.
I think we, I mean, I don't know if we need a motion to have them review it, but we can, when we move forward on executing the properties, that, we'll make a motion on that. But right now, I don't, I don't see where there's an issue with them reviewing it to make sure we can legally do it. Am I correct, Joey?
Yeah.
Got it?
Yeah, that's...
Absolutely.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Chief. Um, have you guys received a report?
Yes.
Questions, comments? I don't have anything to ask. I mean, the fair is coming up, so we're kind of getting a schedule for fair week for traffic control, where that's pretty much been taken up most of the time. Just kind of everyone getting on and off the fair runs. Highlight.
Did we hire anymore? I mean, I love to ask that question.
Um, it's in the works. Derek. So, I have some great news. The lighting, the performance lighting package is sitting on the stage. Uh, we've received all of the equipment. We're waiting for Scott, Rogers, our electrician, to come and actually start the installation. Uh, our expectation is to have that in by the end of the month, which means for the first music on the Delaware performance in October, we'll have the new system in place. The other good news is, if we decide to have another public hearing in the theater, we'll be able to set up a preset so we can watch it. It won't be in the dark. Um, I'm also working with, uh, some other folks on the Preservation Association. After the blackout during the public hearing, I realized how poor the emergency lighting was in the theater. Or it's probably meets minimum code, but we're working on putting in, uh, possibly putting in, uh, battery for all of the aisle lighting. So if the lights were to go out, the aisle light would stay on. Other than that, music on the Delaware, we're looking forward to a great season. Um, and, uh, we've got our first performance in October. And we'll, if you're coming to the fair, stop by the theater booth. We'll all have all the information there. And, uh, that's it. Really excited about the new lighting system.
Wait, one for one of those spectrum to the other?
Yeah. Yeah, I have to wear these different hats.
No, that's great. I think that covers all our department hats, so we'll move on to, uh...
Before you do, um, Phil Brown did have one ask in his report. Um, do you need to set up a banking account?
Yes.
So we need a motion?
Make a motion to establish a banking account for the administration of the Pool of Grace Capital Project?
Second. All favor, Kerry. Trustee reports. Thanks, Dr. DePacino.
Um, I just am going to, first, we have, that's Freedom Fest, right?
Well, you have it.
You guys say after that? I guess. Anyway, so you can take, or that's another option on different events that are all being planned here in the village, with other options, um, the bounce houses. Um, this came from Freedom Fest from one of our vendors. It says, "Thank you for the opportunity to make some money. I haven't set up since two thousand twenty due to COVID, so I'm glad I tried it again. It was a long day for sure, longest day I ever experienced. Wow, what a dream, but yet excited. Best day ever." That was from someone they defended down there. The... Holly has turned in the keys for, um, Black Talis was going to go ahead and take over Austin Lincoln ice skating rink. However, it ended up being major, a major to-do, and we're needing lots more manpower, and they just don't have it. So we're looking again for someone to, or something different, because if we can't find anybody to take over that, then we'll be looking at that. So...
So good news is we did clean it up, so we spent a lot of hours down there.
Yes.
Three or four different trips with multiple people. A lot of hard work, but in the cleaning the area, at least getting rid of the, the liners, so I do appreciate the villagers' help on disposing of that, but, um...
And we appreciate all of what you guys did, so that's amazing.
It's, uh, a lot heavier than we expected. It's going to take, uh, a village to use that thing, the time out. We do still, if, if we need a donation to order a new liner, we're up for still purchasing that. Um, I think it was close to three thousand dollars, uh, but we're just still having that going.
Right, right. Well, thank you again for, for taking that on, and then also for being honest and saying this is not going to work.
No more mosquitoes, hopefully.
Right, so, but yes, it is right up there. Um...
Yeah, thank you, Holly, for taking care of it, but the efforts and spearheading was kind. Thank you for disposing of it. You guys were pretty quick to dispose of it too. I think within an hour or so, you guys are down there just on board. Yeah, I'm just kidding. Tired of mowing.
The, um, we're in the works with the PD still with their, their contracts and stuff, and the court grant, we wanted to bring up tonight, so that grant, because we have to apply for that. So I'm not sure what our process is, what we need to, what we need to do to move forward on applying for that thirty thousand grant.
Do we know what he wants to apply for?
We don't have that exactly everything with me right here and I didn't get a chance to talk to him.
Because we really need to know what he's applying for and how much it's going to be.
Okay. I know he did say that. I mean, if we have that 30,000 there, then let's, we need to try to legalize all that. So, but I'll get a list from him.
But with that grant, that's one of the ones where, when they decide how much they're going to give us. If, if the estimated cost was 25,000 and they say, we're only going to give you 5,000, then the village is on the hook to pay this money. There's no backing out of that. So that's one of the ones we need to be careful of.
Okay. So yeah, so we'll get with him on that.
So we have nothing definitive right now on that?
No, no, let me get back with him and see exactly what he wants to use it.
And make a plan on it as well?
Yeah. And so by the next, unless we need to meet before that because of the deadline.
True.
So we'll do that. And again, it's always been on my agenda, the drugs and the homeless. And it still is, and we need to continue hitting hard. And again, with everybody else, if you see something, say something. So. Other than that.
Even the pavilion.
Yes.
At the green spaces turning into, which I'm sure you, unlike, is turning into a homeless.
Well, I did speak with someone.
I know people can go there and I do see people having lunch and stuff, but then there's a lot that just.
Yeah, you're like, you're just saying ones that are camping on it.
Yeah, or they, that's what I wondered.
Well, just this last week, I did ask the town because they own the pavilion, the Veterans Plaza.
Oh, okay.
So they own that.
Oh, I did.
And I did bring that to their attention, that is there a possibility of shutting off the electric to that pavilion? You, I asked if they rented it and they said yes. And I said, well, then why don't you just shut it off? And they said, well, because, you know, some people, I said, well, maybe revisit that because the locals are not using that because they don't want to go there right now. And if you rent it, then turn the power on when you rent it out and use it for that. But other than that, maybe shut it off so to deter the sleeping on the picnic tables and everything that's going on there. So, because, and I did ask them also to, I mentioned it and asked, I said, and I did talk to chief about this as well and then mentioned it to them. The town, could you possibly put up the, the dust to dawn? Because at the fairgrounds, put up the dust to dawn. Nobody's there, so if they are, then they could address that. And he said as well, if they put up the dust to dawn, nobody allowed at the pavilion. That also would then give the police the option to go handle some of that as well. So I think that that might be, I don't know what they said on their meeting, but that may be a possibility going up there as well to help deter that.
Do you? Do you think that that situation, is it every single day? I don't really, I work.
It's been, yeah, just, he just said just about every day. I mean, I was there at 6:30 in the morning driving through and it was not a nice sight that we wanted.
By one day about eight, your street game would be like twenty.
Yes. And the carts of just the belongings plugging in.
Are these people like in need of services and have nowhere else to go? Or are they just? I mean, I don't know.
I, I mean, we can try, you know, contact like they did up for the tracks again. I do believe one is, has the past, own apartment, but refuses to just.
I would say, I'll make a call to social services and contacts I have there and try to see if we can sort it out some of it that way and then play the other, the other measures that you've come up with as well, probably. But yeah, it's an ongoing issue of vacancy. Probably something needs to be addressed systematically and then systematic perhaps.
Yes. Pretty, pretty much this whole summer so far has been very well occupied down there. Not by, the locals just wanting to go enjoy a day down in the space.
That's all I have.
Do the fire department, do the hose cleanup, but five o'clock in the morning.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I want you to go, you got to talk to them. I got something from the deck here. I'll just print it out and put it on my phone. He was basically covering what you had to say with reference to the theater. So just wanted to make sure they're listening. But we're all good. And Steve didn't have anything to me either because you guys covered everything. So moving on then to mayor's reports. Couple, a couple asks of the board. There's a handful of events coming up. We're doing an end of summer bash. We're trying to plan an end of summer bash in the green space again. It's going to be more of like a family fun, maybe I think a couple of food trucks and maybe a handful of vendors will be in the Veterans Plaza green space. And there'll be like cornhole and a handful of games to get the kids out, moving in the green and stuff like that. Now, maybe a Freedom Fest at like a tenth of the pace, something of that nature. But trying to plan something of that nature for the thirtieth of August. And then for September, there's nothing for, I just want to get up these all on the calendar now. The 31st is Halloween, so we'll be playing something for the first of November. And then from the first of November through to Christmas, trying to do something in the green space as well that has a walkthrough with the light show, Christmas lights or something of that nature. So the chamber and another committee is trying to get that together. So my ask is, can I get a motion to use the green space for those purposes for community events of that nature and those destinations during those time frames?
Do you have a motion to do just that?
Okay. My ask from you is to help me walk down there in green space and make sure there's no holes, stuff like that. So kids disappear. A small spot. It's not that big. I'm just kidding. No loitering in the holes. All right. So that was my answer for that. The fair is coming up, obviously. It's supposed to be a really fun time of year. Everybody's having a good time going out to the fair. Hopefully we don't have road rage or anybody being angry and something like that flying out there at the end of the night trying to get home. Everybody's just calm during the time. Nightcom is hosting a selfie day on August 12th in front of your municipality, in front of the building. So Jody, I imagine you guys are going to do your selfies?
Nope.
I laughed on that. I was like, no, I'm not going to put that in the board meeting. It's a promotion for promoting your municipality and your village and putting it on the Nightcom website. So there's no prize or anything like that, but it still made me laugh nonetheless. As far as anything else for my report, I don't have anything, so.
We will be dropping off the passes for all you guys. So this, in the next couple of days, Jody will have them.
Move on to the seeker. So the seeker is the final portion of our portion on this board for, excuse me. The amendment to change the multifamily district on the Sheffield Pond or Walton Pond, as it's now every called, to use it as a resort. So this portion is just the last step, correct? This is the last step we have to do?
I think so.
And then they move on to planning board, correct? Sean? Is it Sean? So that's this last part. Yes, we move on to sections two and three. So this is an impact on the land. Part two is designated to help the lead agency inventory all potential resources that could be affected by a proposed project or action. We recognize that the lead agency's reviewer will not necessarily be an environmental professional, so. Questions are designated to walk a reviewer through the assessment process by providing a series of questions that can be answered using the information found in part one. To further assist the lead agency in completing part two, the form identifies the most relevant questions in part one that will provide the information needed to answer part two question. When part two is completed, the lead agency will have identified the relevant environmental areas that will be impacted by the proposed activity. Now, for those of you that are probably wondering what I'm talking about here, this is, this is in reference to Sheffield Pond and the area up on, off of West Street there that they're trying to turn into a resort, which is multiple cabins, a restaurant and a handful of other things that they're trying to do, which falls under the definition of a resort. You can chime in anytime you want from us being correct here.
Right, because that has nothing to do with that project.
Correct.
This is just to add the definition to the resort into the village code.
Right.
So that's all we're doing.
It's not to do with, but it's because of that.
Right.
Just sort of clear. Right. So as Jody said, to amend the law to allow that resort action. So, impact on land, the proposed action may involve destruction on or physical altercation of the land surface or the proposed site. So if we can answer yes, we're going to move on. We have section two.
Impact on land, proposed action may involve destruction on or physical alteration of the land surface and proposed site. It says we're going to be adding buildings, build certain changes.
The proposed action may involve construction on land with a depth of water, depth to water table is less than three feet, but that's not correct. I'm going to ask.
It's not correct.
The water table's that high, we got other issues. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifteen percent greater or greater. Good spot in there. We don't go, the topography doesn't increase until it's out of town, or out of the village, excuse me. The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or heavily within by the existing ground surfaces now. The proposed action may include, include the excavation and removal of more than a hundred or a thousand tons of natural material. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year in multiple phases. Yes.
We don't go all the way in once. Building multiple cabins.
The proposed action may result in increased erosion whether from physical disturbance or vegetation or movement treatment by herbicides. Because what they do, they're going to replace with that. I'm making that one. Proposed action is or may be located within the coastal erosion pad? No. Other impacts.
Oh, we got a bunch, huh? The exciting part, guys. It's about seven pages.
Seven pages, let's just see. Impact on geological features, the proposed action may result in the modification or destruction or inhibit access to unique use or unusual landforms on the site. Fossils, caves, et cetera.
Can you figure if I read it seven? Tell me your answer. Identify the specific landforms attached. It's blank. Both on that?
Did you answer that?
Yes. Impacts on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface water bodies in the streams, rivers, ponds, or lakes. There are bells and whistles.
Fact again.
So any difference at all? Like that, on the base screen? Impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. Impact of flooding. The proposed action may result in development on lands subject to flooding. Impacts on air, the proposed action may include a state regulated air emission source. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. The proposed action may The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. The land use of the proposed action, so there's, there's or directly is obviously different from or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. So is it like going to obstruct the?
No, they want to, they want to, they want to, I mean, it's going to be blending in with the landscape.
Impact on historic and archaeological resources, the proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource.
Nothing at all.
Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. Impact on critical environmental areas, the proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. The proposed action may result in a change of existing transportation systems. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. No electricity? So we'd have to add the electrical grid? Which may. That would be against it, I think.
Agreed.
All right, so we'll have to go through that. The proposed action will require a new or upgrade to an existing substation. No idea.
It's hard to say through another command.
Says my options are no or small impact may occur, moderate to large impact may occur. The proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than fifty single or two family residences or to serve a commercial or industrial use. The proposed action may utilize more than 2,500 milliwatt, megawatts, MW, oh, MW megawatts? Hours per year of electricity. No idea?
No, it's temporary.
The proposed.
Like when I say temporary, I mean, it's like in and out housing. It's not continuous housing.
The proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area when completed. Impact on noise, odor, and light, the proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting.
Read that word out, sorry.
The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. Possible if they don't have visible in the neighborhood property.
Right.
Or auto building.
It's, it's hard to answer these questions with extreme honesty because it's just, I mean, I would say yes, obviously you're going to be making some noise and some lighting.
Right, so that's why you got to get a little bit more. All right, so that's why you gotta get a little bit more picky on the individual question. The proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation.
No.
You have no local regulation? Don't worry about it, though. The proposed action may result in blasting within one thousand five hundred feet of any residence, hospital, school, licensed daycare center, or nursing. Proposed action may result in routine odors from more than one day, one hour per day. So I got over here. Proposed action may result in light shining onto adjacent properties. The proposed action may result in lighting, lighting, creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, so light vision. Impact on human health, the proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contaminants. Consistency with community plans, the proposed action is not consistent with adopted land use plans. Seems like we're gonna have to work that one. Definitely this. If it is not not consistent, that means it is consistent. Consistency with community character, the proposed project is inconsistent with the existing community character. That's all, folks.
Do we get a motion to?
To do the signature, right?
So are you declaring that there are no significant negative environmental impacts here? Is that on that form?
Yes, certainly, they're not doing anything.
I have one question.
Yes.
As it said, um, odors emitting for more than one hour, are campfires gonna be created at this resort?
I don't know yet. This is just the.
Okay, that was my only question out of all of that, but if there's anything else I one hundred percent agree with, but I just, that's an unforeseen thing, just something to think about.
You come from beliefs, beliefs up there.
I was thinking more of the odor of the campfires emitting into Berg Street and St. John and all that community up there, because they would be potentially upwind depending on the wind direction.
That's a big question to say.
Well, I mean, based on the resort definition, which is what? No, I mean, what, so the resort, this is me asking you a question, so the resort definition was what, it was buildings, grocery store and restaurant, right?
Yeah.
So there was no campgrounds, I suppose.
Okay, just making sure.
No, no, I'm asking a question, is that, was there campgrounds in the resort definition or no?
I don't believe there was.
Okay.
I'd have to look at it again to be sure, this is something I can look at.
I was pretty sure that when, when Sean says there was no campgrounds listed in that, now, when they went forward or wanted to do something else that falls under the town.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, there's no campgrounds. There's no campgrounds.
I'll say.
It's a great question, just to cover that base, but yeah, there's.
That doesn't mean that there wouldn't be a campfire outside the cabin.
Correct.
You know, if they have rental cabins, that they have campfire, campfire rains out come.
Understood.
Not a campground, per se.
But, but this is subject to change if they're moving forward, right?
Well. You say subject to change, I mean, as far, I mean, this is just allowing the resort, so let me just, so what this resort definition is, based on what it says right here, is defined as the minimum lot area should be five acres. All buildings and active recreational facilities shall be set back at least a hundred feet from any lot line abutting to residential use, if you can talk to that. Adequate off-street parking shall be provided, including spaces for guests and employees. No resort shall permit any permanent residency of guests more than thirty days in a ninety day period. Landscaping and buffering shall be provided to ensure compatibility with adjacent residential uses. So what this is, is it's an amendment to, and, sorry, one more. The village board may impose such additional conditions as necessary to ensure the use is compatible with the character of the district and will not result in undue adverse impacts. So this could be something to happen like the planning board committee, that this is what the village requests, that X, Y, Z is not gonna happen, or we want limited use of X, Y, Z in, in this area. But as far as this is concerned, this right now, all we're doing is moving forward on amendment for resorts by this definition to move forward. Makes sense?
Does this have yet to go to, back to the planning board? Yes.
No.
We don't want there to be.
No, because this had to be put in place before they could even think about that. But I believe this is a conditional use, so it'll be back here eventually as well.
I believe, the planning board was, I don't remember the date though.
Do you know what that was?
It might be like the twenty first.
The twenty first is when the hospital's happening.
Yeah.
The parking lot, the planning board meeting.
I have one last question, are campfires allowed in the village?
So I guess it's equal to go both ways then? Where was this when they did the slurries?
So for the campfires in the village, it can be no longer than four feet wide length or in circumference, the flames cannot be anything over four feet tall, it has to be no longer than four feet in length and no larger than six inches in diameter. And then that's what can be burnt within the village, and it needs to be stuff that's fallen on your property, you can't be hauling in debris from somewhere else and then burning it in the backyard all night.
All right, moving on to part three, the signature aspect of it. Upon review of the information recorded, the CAF has noted plus the additional support information.
So that's if there's any extra things you want to add, I suppose, and explanation on the reality isn't that a thing?
No, I was just reading that here. The project will result in no significant adverse impacts on the environment, therefore, an environmental impact statement need not be prepared accordingly, this negative declaration is issued. Although, although this project could have significant, significant adverse impact on the environment, that impact will be avoided or substantially mitigated because of the following conditions, which may.
That's, yeah, that's the alternative to this one, so that's not overran.
Moving on, and see, the project will result in more significant, so.
So they're, they're choosing A, which is that there is no known significant impact based on this, the line or definition of resort that will be adverse impact inherently to the villagers, right?
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
And then we just need a motion.
We got a motion.
Declare that and then what you sign it.
So make a, so we're making a motion then to declare that we have filled out questionnaire and find that there's no adverse.
Significant.
Significant adverse environmental impact, and also we're authorized, also authorized the mayor to sign as such.
Home favor?
Carry it.
Jody, I'm just gonna say, I'll let you fill the rest up there. All right, the village court annual audit, we had a chance to review that, correct?
We still haven't passed the law, so if you're ready now.
Yeah.
Everybody's happy with that, we did a public hearing, so just, just a motion.
So we need to make a motion to pass the local law that rezone, that creates the definition for resort in the village code area.
Correct.
I have a motion for that.
Home favor?
Aye.
Carry it. All right, village court audit, annual audit, we got a chance to review it, over. Negative motion. Proven?
Motion to, to be court audited.
Home favor?
Carry it.
We're gonna move into executive session to discuss contract agreements.
Right.
Personal issues. So that's it.
And we're gonna go into executive session to discuss personal issues?
Home favor?
Carry it.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
That's the.